All right, call this meeting to order. All right, um, opening ceremony, our mission is to foster academic and social growth for each student in a safe, supportive school environment. Our vision is to be a learning community that inspires our students and staff to think critically, grow intellectually, and live with integrity. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three, do we have any additions to the agenda?
No.
So, okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda. I'll move. Do I have a second?
I don't have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Onto the approval of minutes for the regular meeting on June twentieth, twenty twenty-two, the special meetings that were June twenty-second, June thirtieth, July ninth, and July tenth of twenty twenty-two. Just a note, um, we did have an amendment, we need to add the, um, motion to adjourn what's done by Jamie on July ninth, the second was by me. Do we need a motion to approve them?
Yes, to approve the change.
Um, not to approve the change, but just to approve the change.
Okay, so just an emotion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, and for administrative report, we have Dr. Dineen.
I am sitting in for Dr. Banks, and she is on vacation and returns later this week, um, and we do not have any district update currently. I know she's working on a community update and staff update that will go out in very early August that has information about a lot of our new hires, um, some restructuring that's happening and things like our kickoff event that'll be happening for the new building, so that'll be soon.
Okay. All right, uh, moving right along then to number six, public address, we do have one, so I will read, um, "The board believes it is in its best interest and the best interest of the students of the district to hear comments from members of the public. It has been therefore a longstanding practice of the board to encourage and allow residents to speak at the public meeting. This may be done by completing a bottom portion of this form and giving it to the board president prior to the board meeting." All right, uh, the board welcomes Malcolm Timmons, you have five minutes.
Malcolm, five minutes. Okay, my name is Malcolm Timmons, uh, live in the neighborhood, right, water, some people say it's Finney Town, some say it's College Hill, tomatoes, tomatoes. Once you go down Kirkland, Plantation, College Hill, Orleans Court, but if you keep down Kirkland, still Finney Town, so that's here or there. So, uh, I live in the neighborhood and I'm going up and down Win Road, and I see the new school, which I thought was great. So I'm thinking to myself, man, this place has to have a, a state-of-the-art HVAC system, 'cause you know with all the things with COVID and people breathing, I said, let me see if they have something else today I can bring to them. So, we have a business called the Air Surface Pro, and it just helps clean the air and just filter out, um, I don't want to sound like the boogeyman here, but I see things starting to, to surface again. Some people want to wear masks, you don't want to get into the vaccine debate, me personally, I have both shots of booster, that's just me. But I think that, I just really wanted to, uh, leave the board some information about the Air Surface Pro, let you, let you guys look over and see what you think about it. Uh, it's a really good thing, um, this company was around like seventy-five years before we even got involved in it, and their main thing was people that deal with allergies and suffer with asthma and things, but when the pandemic hit, it really took off because it cleans the air, and we know that's what viruses does. So, we got it out and there is, people start buying all over the country. Things kind of settled down, but people still have breathing issues, they still need our product, so I just thought I would bring it to you guys and let you all see it. So, I mean, it's a, I can't, well, it's more than five minutes, but, well, no, I'm sorry, let me say that, it's only two minutes actually. The only way you could really see it, I would have to give each one of you all one of these brochures, and once you scan the QR code, it's like a two-minute video, tell you all about all the scientific stuff that you and I probably wouldn't know, but when you hear it, it sounds good, so I would leave that with you all. Other than that, um, my thing with this virus, I think that we should be doing more, that's just me, but you can't push that on people. So, this is what I have for you all, and I'll, I'll stop right there, thank you.
Thank you. Please make sure Dave will take that to make sure you have it.
Okay.
All right, um, no further public address, moving on to board coordination. Um, before we go into each of our own things, we were going to start with a discussion on creating and naming of a board committee, um, for the purpose of facilitating dialogue and conversation within our diverse communities to better understand our needs and opportunities around diversity, equity, and inclusion. This is something that we discussed at our board retreats on July ninth. It's something that we feel is, um, important to our district, it's important to our students, it was, uh, we think it's a really great idea, where we're going to have a board community that is going to reach out to the community and gather input from all of the diverse groups within our district regarding what they think is important or where we need to improve, um, maybe some things that we're not aware of, so. For us, we need a name, and then, oh, so what we're going to start with is, we have an application process, Tony was pulling together his application process that he already knows about, he did send that to me, I have it, I, um, it needs to be adjusted to meet our needs, but I will send it out to everybody now that I have it. Um, and then we are going to request applications from the community to lead the committee. It will be two people leading the committee that we will choose, and then from there, we will have applications turned in, those two leaders will choose their, um, core team to go about asking these questions, but we need a name for this committee, so. What do we got?
What did you mention, Jamie?
I just mentioned, uh, the active community engagement committee, uh, former government, government employee loving three-letter acronyms, the, the ACE committee could be something. One thing I do want to say though, the committee itself is a board committee, so it will be hosting those gatherings in public, uh, and the entire purpose of it will be open to the community for people to speak, so anyone can attend those, those meetings as well. But that, that's what I had, uh, as a suggestion, I may have some more.
Mine are kind of, I don't know, might be kind of wonky. All Wildcats succeed, I have Finney Town We Stand, Finney Town Diversity Network, um, Beyond Differences, Finney Town, Finney Towned, um, uh, can't read my handwriting, I don't know what I wrote there. Wildcats, Diversity Network, um, Wildcat Tapestry, and Beyond Wildcat Differences.
Those are really good, those two. Uh, I think my favorite one out of those is probably the Beyond Differences, Finney Town, um, and then there was another one that you wrote toward the end.
Um.
Beyond Wildcat Differences, I like both of those.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, I like Jamie's as, as, as well, I think Jamie's is very.
We could go to a four, four-letter acronym with the Finney Town Active Community Engagement in its face.
My only, well, my only idea was, uh, just the We Are Finney Town Committee, um, but that's fairly simple.
Can they take a vote?
Um, that's five of them, so how do we want to go about deciding? We could delay the start of it a little bit and have a vote from the community if we wanted, I don't know if it's really gonna bring on a lot.
Generate a lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, especially in the summer right now, um, and it would be quicker for us to start the process if we were to go ahead and name it here.
But we have a special meeting coming up before tonight, we're meeting.
We do, but that meeting already has a very large agenda, full of, um, critical topics because it's also the security.
Or, yeah. Okay. Gotcha.
Discussion. Um, I really liked All Wildcats Succeed and the Beyond Differences, Finney Town.
That would agree.
So do we want to stick with those two?
Jamie, could you read yours again?
Mine was just the, the, I add, changed it at the end, the Finney Town Active Community Engagement Committee.
I'm open to whatever, I'm, I'm letting it easy, it's fine.
Okay.
I like that one and the Beyond Differences, Finney Town.
Okay. We're down to two, Active Community, Face, Finney Town Active Community Engagement, and Beyond Differences, Finney Town.
Face.
Um, the only real difference I see, I, I like both of those, but I like having it where you could call it Face, if that's easier to remember.
I think Face is pretty good too, because it kind of just says that those people are the face of Finney Town.
What do you think?
Um, no, I, right, I agree that acronym helps and I like the Face. I liked the Wildcat Tapestry myself, so, um, I like, and I like Beyond Differences, Finney Town too, I, it, I'm not sure if Active Community Engagement necessarily on its face, uh, makes it clear that it's about diversity, equity, inclusion, whereas Beyond Differences or even Tapestry, Tapestry to me might, but that was what I think, yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's a good point. What do you think, Dave?
I like what Jen just said. I like the Beyond Differences.
Dave's never said that before.
Do we have a consensus about the Beyond Differences?
Do we, do we all agree? All right, announcing the new board community or board committee.
Do we need an official vote?
Beyond, no we don't, not from what I, not from what Tony told me.
No?
Beyond Differences, Finney Town.
All right, perfect.
Applications will be posted soon. Cool, all right, so board coordination, from anyone else, who wants to start?
I don't have a whole lot, I just wanted to say, um, I was really excited about our retreat that we just had, um, special thanks to everybody for coming out. We had Grant Anderson, um, Eric, and Dave, and all of us came together, and Laurie came together, and I felt like we just, it was, it was good for us, you know? It was a, a moment where we shed some tears and, um, we all opened up, um, and I, I think it made a difference, so I just wanted to say thanks for everybody making that possible. Cindy was also there. Um, I got to listen to a podcast by Dr. Paul Johnson, and he's a professor, uh, professor over at, um, it's at Bowling Green, and it was just basically, it was a good podcast, it was about, um, how to provide support to your superintendent, and how boards do you make a difference with the superintendent if it's done the correct way, and just talking about it being a partnership, um, just a hand-in-glove relationship, and I thought it was very helpful, um, I can send it to you guys if you're interested. And also recommend it doing continuing education courses, which we've been doing, um, which was good to hear. Also, tax-free weekend is coming up on August the fifth, um, that starts at noon, and that will go until August seventh. So. That's pretty much all I had, it's been kind of light with it being the summer with the PTA, so. Be back in gear in the next couple months.
I'd like to, last month, I made a no vote, uh, here in the board, and I think I should be explaining why when I make a no vote, I did not do that last month. It was regards to, uh, Mr. Muchmore, and it was presented as a salary. Uh, my no vote was not about the salary. My no vote was about the position title and the job description, and I think it's fiscally irresponsible for the school board to have that position. So that's why I was voting no for it, and if we're filling it, if the position's going to happen, I think there should be someone different in the role. That was why I made the vote that I made last month. And my committees, no one met, uh, that, that I, I was able to attend, uh, and unfortunately for the tax-free weekend, I'm going to be in Canada, so I'm going to be paying wicked taxes, uh, when I'm up there.
I hear that. Do you have any?
Yeah, I'll go next, I just wanted to thank, uh, administrators that came out on, uh, well, a few administrators were there on, uh, on Saturday, uh, and we had some administrators out on Sunday, so, so special thanks to, uh, to Grant and Eric and Laurie and Dave, uh, for taking time out of your weekend that, that you would have spent with your family, and also just to thank you to the rest of the board members for, um, for coming out and spending time away from your families too. So I just appreciated being able to get together with all of you, I feel like we got a lot of good work done, we still have more work to do, um, but I think we got the ball rolling and a lot of really great conversations. Um, also I wanted to say, uh, there was not a, um, Finney Town Music Parents Association meeting this month that we attended. Unfortunately, we missed that, but I think it was a relatively light agenda, um, and then the, uh, long-term facilities planning, uh, committee also did not meet this month, um, and, uh, Lindsey, if you, I think we've already shared the bad news, but just to reiterate that we're not getting our funding for the, uh, secondary campus project, uh, at least not for the next, uh, six months to a year, is what it looks like.
So, and it's, it's not just for the secondary, um, because that's where I think it's gonna get misconstrued, it is the whole project, the elementary and the secondary campus, they are funding sixty percent of it, the funding has not changed as far as that, but there is no guaranteed date of when we get that, and I know that that's been a point of contention that the community has addressed with us several times, um, we haven't had a date from the start. So, um, that's, that's not new, we did expect it hopefully by this, this fiscal year calendar, but, um, so far, we have not gotten it yet. It covers sixty percent of both schools, we just, our funding happened to be enough to cover the elementary school, which is why we could go ahead and start on that before we had our funding from the state. Yeah, hopefully, uh, hopefully soon.
Thank you, that's all I have for my update, and I ended yours.
Yeah, so FMPA did meet, but I, uh, have to give my apology, I was not able to attend, um, I was planning to be there, but unfortunately, right before the actual meeting, I realized I didn't have the address to go, and, um, wasn't able to get ahold of anyone, unfortunately. So, um, my apologies, I meant to be there, I just didn't know where to go. They are having a golf outing though, they are asking, please sign up. It looks like it's gonna be a lot of fun, they have reiterated, you don't have to know how to golf, you don't have to be good at golf, you just have to know how to have fun. That is the only request that they had. Um, it looks like it's gonna be a great time, so if you need details on the golf outing, I do have them, um, Eddie probably has them as well. We can get that for you. Uh, the personnel committee has met a couple of times, we've been hard at work finalizing the plans with the org chart, doing some, um, role changes, shifting of roles, and we are finalizing a project that hopefully we can present next month, um, that I think everyone on our staff is going to appreciate, um, more to come on that. And then OSBA, uh, we do have the board guidebook, it is in process, so Cheryl is working on that, and she'll send it out to us as soon as it's ready. Um, Grant, just a heads up, you may be getting questions on the website if she needs links, so, I forgot to tell you that. Um, we're also doing a board self-assessment, so we decided that the first step of doing a self-assessment is to establish our goals for the upcoming year, and we said we're gonna do those in September, um, and then upcoming OSBA events, the Capitol Conference is November thirteenth through the fifteenth, so go ahead and mark your calendars, registration opens July twenty-fifth. I highly recommend going to that. They do have an open house coming up, it's on August seventh at two PM at TriStar Career Compact. I don't know where that's at, but it's in our region. And then the two thousand twenty-two annual Ohio School Safety Summit is coming up, August second through August fourth, it is free, it is in person, um, but that is something, if anyone is interested in attending, um, I can get you details on. Um, there's a webinar on August tenth for Accelerating Student Success Through Board Policy, that looks really interesting to me, and the August Town Hall is August twenty-fifth. I haven't finished watching the OSBA Town Hall for June, it, um, it covers school safety, which I've already told Grant would be a good idea to watch, um, anyone who's interested in that topic, it, it looks like it's gonna be covering a lot, um, highly recommend watching that one, they have it on their, um, website. And then July's Town Hall hasn't happened yet. Anything else for board coordination? All right, moving on to financial matters, um, do we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar for discussion?
I'll move.
A second.
Okay, um, item eight point one, monthly financial report. So, June does represent the end of the fiscal year, so we have final numbers. Total revenue for the fiscal year in the general fund was nineteen million, nine hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred nine dollars. Total expenditures for the year, twenty thousand, one hundred fifty-four thousand, seven hundred eighty-six dollars. The ending cash balance in the general fund was thirteen million, one hundred forty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars, and so expenditures exceeded revenues for the year by two hundred thousand dollars. The good news is that those expenditures did include a three million dollar transfer to our building fund, and so I think we'd have to look at this as a, a very good year in terms of what we're able to accomplish. And, um, the, uh, the expenditures were down, a lot of that is, uh, due to Esser funding be avail, being available to us, and so a lot of things that we were doing, um, met the requirements of that grant, and so, uh, we were allowed to spend quite a bit of money on things that perhaps would have been spent out of the general fund, and so, um, that is something to, to watch for years down the road in terms of, um, coming off of that, that grant funding and, and moving, um, you know, strictly to the general fund for, uh, those activities, but, um, got some detail here on, on the various line items, um, are there any questions about anything that I can answer?
So the portion that is lower due to the Esser funding, is that the seven hundred ninety-two thousand number that you have there? If we hadn't had Esser funding for those things, it would have, uh, our expenditures would have been that much more.
Right, yeah, I, right, I budgeted knowing that we'd be using Esser, but, you know, sparingly is the way I budgeted, and we were able to use a lot more Esser dollars, so.
And could you give, uh, the community a little bit of an idea of what those things were, what was included in those, in those Esser expenditures, just broad categories?
Well, um, we use Esser to hire staff, and so salaries and benefits, um, and we didn't hire a tremendous amount of staff, but of course, um, that is, anytime you hire people, it's expensive, and so, um, that was a big help to our budget. There are a lot of purchase services and equipment and supplies, uh, most of these would be around the, the categories that, uh, of learning loss, um, and, and helping students regain perhaps, um, you know, what may have, um, you know, been lost as, as a result of some of that time not in the classroom, so. Dr. Dineen, would you like to add in any way to, to that?
Um, the learning loss, like, we had the summer extended learning opportunity, last summer, we have it again this summer, Esser helps pay for that. Um, we had tutoring, like, um, Shannon Ford, now Shannon Brown, worked in the building this year at Brent and offered tutoring, and so Esser helped to pay for that. Um, it did go towards some professional development for staff, so, yep.
And our, our expectation is that those funds are gone after?
So, um, there were three grants given, um, the, uh, the first one expired this past June, we've got a next, another round that will expire a year from now, and then the final, um, funding will expire two years from now, but, so we do have several more years of that, um. We are at least using the, a lot of that last section to do the HVAC improvements, or actually, is it the roof? We talked about doing both, uh, it's the roof we're doing, thank you, um, so that's about seven hundred thousand dollars, but, um, so.
For the gym, yeah.
Yeah, we, we have a lot of things planned for that money, and it's, it's a big help to us. Okay, um, item B, depository investment balances as of June thirtieth, US Bank, six hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And I do not have the most recent version of the agenda in here, I'm sorry, thanks to Mr. Ray for catching that, and, um, updating some of those, but, um, thank you. Uh, Star Ohio, um, non-construction funds, seventeen million, ninety-two thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars, fifty-five cents. And then we've got another Star Ohio, and this is what I'm calling construction number two, this is three million, five thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars and fifty-one cents, that's a three million dollar transfer plus the interest that we've earned on that money since that time. Then we've got our US Bank Construction, which is, uh, the money that was invested for longer term, you can see it's earning a, a lower interest rate because interest rates are going up and that, that money is logged in. But four million, eight hundred eighty-five thousand, four hundred ninety-five dollars, seventy-seven cents, and then Star Ohio, another fund for construction, two million, four hundred forty-six thousand, four hundred nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
And for these funds, Dave, the, the interest rates are all locked in, so they're not changing with the current interest rates?
The, uh, Star Ohio, interest rates are floating, and so they, they will continue to rise as interest rates do, the, uh, the US Bank accounts, yeah, they're, they're fixed, they're, that's what, you know, that's what they're gonna earn, so, um, yeah. Item C, interest earned on depository investment accounts for June, general fund, sixteen thousand, six hundred seventy dollars, fifty-five cents. Construction fund, six thousand, one hundred nine dollars and twenty-nine cents. So the, uh, in the financial reports, the, uh, the last page, I have information about our, our construction project. And, um, two parts there, table one shows that we've expended twenty-one million dollars on this project. You can see a kind of a breakout, about one point seven million on design, just over nineteen million dollars on construction, and then we've got several hundred thousand dollars in other type of items and soft costs, um, but we are nearing completion of that project. But we have taken over the building, it is now ours, it's been released to us, uh, certainly, there is some work that's continuing, but, um, you know, it's, it's our building now, so, happy day. Um, part two, uh, of the project shows that we do have, um, some purchase orders still out there, um, approximately two point seven million dollars. Um, and then we have an uncommitted balance, which will continue to have things that we need to spend money on, um, but, you know, right now, we're looking at about seven point six million dollars to kick off the, the next phase, once the state money comes in, and then there's some money to do some renovation work that's not part of the project that's included in this, and so that would be locally funded initiative type of, of spending, so, um, I think we're in good shape considering what's happened, um, but, you know, we'll see. Any questions? Have we got our furniture yet?
Yes.
I know at least some of it's been delivered, has, has it all come in, or?
No, not all of it, but a lot of it.
We're still missing the soft furniture.
The soft furniture, just like the more flexible seating out in the, um,
Common areas, like in the home?
Um, the wider homes, but desks, tables, chairs, all of that is there.
How's moving going? I've seen pictures.
It's, yeah, they're, all of the boxes got moved, Eric and I smartly were on vacation that week, so, yep, it's, they're in there. And I know a lot of staff are excited to get in and start getting things moved, and they come in mid-August, right, is it August fifteenth? Yeah.
So, um, I will mention also, uh, there is another report in with, um, that section, and that's the, uh, official certificate of estimated resources that was sent to the county auditor on June twenty-eighth, the board gave you the word you asked one to approve that, this is that report. And it's, what it shows is fifty million dollars in total resources that was available for expenditure appropriation, and so, um, that's there as well. Item E is a recommendation to improve permanent appropriation adjustments for the year just completed, and, uh, those amounts are in the revised agenda. Um, you'll see that most of them are reductions, um, but the total is, uh, five hundred seventy-nine thousand dollar credit against these funds, so we're reducing, um, income stake. And item F is a recommendation to transfer funds, uh, this is something- This is something that we do each and every year at this time. $2,000 to the band uniform replacement fund. $1,000 to the family involvement center fund. And I think most of you are aware that the band just emptied that account to buy new uniforms, which are expected in several months and they'll be wearing those soon. So, that is a very important contribution that we make along with FMPA. They pay half. Then item G is a recommendation to improve petty cash accounts as listed. Item H is a recommendation to prove advances from the general fund into several grants as listed. That money will be returned in the new fiscal year.
Could I ask, Dave, on for item F, the family involvement center fund, what is that?
So, that's just money to help facilitate the work. We know how important it is to have parents, guardians, family involved in stuff. And so, that's their mission, to help engage the families in. And so, they'll have activities during the year. And so, they use this money to help make those events run a little smoother and attract people to them.
Great. Since wasn't familiar with it. Is that something we could get a presentation from the group to learn more about it?
Yeah, I'm sure we can.
And you said the, sorry, on G, sorry, H, the money will be coming back to the general fund once those?
Yeah, it will. This is just temporarily, what this allows us to do is to keep the fund balances positive at the end of the year when we do our financial reporting. But there was good reason to spend some of these funds. For instance, the high schools at work. Had we not spent it by June 30th, we would give it back. We wouldn't be able to spend it. So, you know, that's important. And so, all these were expenditures that we felt were important to make in June. And then we made the necessary advance.
Do we have any questions? All right. Can we get a roll call?
Yes. Ms. McMullin?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. Moving on to item nine, superintendent's recommendations. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
I'll move.
Second.
So, we see with item A, 9A, we had four resignations that have come through since we last met. So, we are sorry to see each of them go and appreciate all the time and dedication they've given to the district and wish them all well in their future endeavors. Item B is approval of one of our new assistant principals at Finney Town Elementary, Chad Hergren, who is with us back there. So, if you haven't had a chance to meet Chad, I recommend stopping by and introducing yourself. Item C tells you about four of the new hires we've had. June, June's a busy month with hiring for sure. So, and we're still, we're still in it. So, I expect August will have some additional hires. The approval for item E of Chris Callahan, that had come through on the board agenda previously. And then we have restructured the technology department. We're going down by one person and so adding responsibilities to Chris's position. So, that is why the increase there. You see approval for payment that work, work staff has done over the summer coming in. We have our ELA teams meeting, literacy leadership team, our interview teams. We have a lot of staff who come in and put in hours for the interview process. Seventh grade team has been meeting. Item H is for the contract for Michelle Yao. She's actually an intervention specialist at St. X. They choose to use part of their IDA funds for that. And so, then they're technically employed by us since we manage those funds for them. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
Okay. We have our SRO, so is item I, the approval of that contract. And everything I've heard, it'll continue to be Officer Smith, so that is great news. And then we have some agreements with Hamilton County. The ones that you see J.K. and L. are all for the preschool specifically. Contract with them for what we offer for our students attending preschool. And then item N is annual. So, it happens every year at this time where we recognize our support organizations. We want to continue that. And then FAA, the Finney Town Athletic Association, isn't a support organization, but we consider them an official community partner. And then item O talks about the general liability insurance for those. You may notice secondary PTA is not on there. And that is because they opt to get their insurance through their own program rather than through us. And then, it's kind of exciting, item P, a few more change orders for the new building. But as we're reaching the end of the project, we're thinking there won't be too many more of those. So, it's an exciting time.
Back to item C. And just for clarification, the date on there is through June 12th. All the other dates I thought were through June 30th. Is there a reason that one's different?
Which one is C?
Approval of contracts, one-year limited certified? The new teachers?
I think June 12th was specified because of the late start. And that's the last contract date for staff.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Am I correct about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And could I ask, I don't know if you would know or you might know, but for the permanent key cores? I read that when, for item P, for one of the change orders, it says have the construction team rather than the district, install the permanent key cores. I wasn't familiar with that term.
So, we're just talking about the locks for all the doors. At one point, our maintenance staff was going to do that, hit each door and put those in. And a decision was made that this was a better, I didn't make that.
That's simple. No, I was just curious, especially because of regards related to school security. So, I wasn't sure if it was some sort of special locking system or?
I think it's same equipment, just different installers.
Great.
Do you have any questions?
And one thing, do we know, and you may not know now, but do we know if those locks can lock from the inside and not just from the outside?
What do you mean by that?
Can you lock them with a key from the inside or do you have to open up the door in order to lock the key?
If none of the doors do not stay unlocked unless you like use an Allen key to open them. So, the key cores right now, if you go over there, they're all colored orange. And those are the temporary cores that will be replaced. So, yeah.
So, they'll automatically stay locked all day?
Yeah, they don't, yeah, they don't unlock. Like, I mean, unless you use a key.
But you can still open them from the inside, but not from the outside?
Yes, yeah, that's a safety thing. You cannot, you cannot lock, yeah.
So, as long as they're all automatically locked, then that's kind of my safety concern as far as that's concerned.
Yeah, you just can't, yeah. Any kind of interior door always has to open out.
And I'm sure we'll have more questions on security on August 11th.
Yeah.
Thanks, Greg.
Any other questions? Okay. Can we have a little call vote?
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr.? Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. McMullin?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 10, approval of contract renewal. This is Dave's contract here, effective August 1st. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
And I'm?
I'll second.
Okay.
Do you want to discuss anything, Dave?
Do we have any discussion?
Put you on the spot.
Just thank the board for considering this contract.
Any other questions or discussion? All right, roll, is that a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. McMullin?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Motion passes. I keep waiting on Tony to say that, I'm sorry. All right. Item 11, action steps. So, do you have any recorded, Dave?
Just about the DEI, the DEI committee to send out revocations for community.
Or rather the?
The, sorry, what was?
Beyond the Finney Town Committee.
Yes.
I was just curious who Tony has in mind as far as like for? For hiring?
For the leaders. We are, so it's not us choosing them yet. We're going to create an application.
Okay.
And he sent me the template that he uses currently for another organization. I'm going to edit it to match our needs and then I'll send it to you guys so we can, you know, finalize it and get it out to the community. And then, please, please apply, is all I have to say.
And as of right now, those are volunteer positions?
Yeah, right now, we don't have anything figured out past that yet. Okay. Do we have any other action items?
We were also going to get information about family involvement?
Yes. And Jen's going to take that one.
Yep.
And then I had a question about the Whittaker Elementary demo bids. That's something that we gave Dr. Banks at our last meeting to look for, or his last meeting, to look for bids for the demolition of Whittaker. I don't know if that's, she's not here obviously, but that's something that we're going to be in an update on that. And that would be great. Do you know anything about that, Dave, as far as?
I know nothing has happened in the last month or half. At least I should say I'm not aware of anything, I should say, but that nothing's happened.
All right. Okay. Moving on to announcements. We, the Finney Town Board of Education will hold a special meeting on August 11th, 5:00 PM here in the media center of Finney Town Secondary Campus. In order to preview the 22, 23 safety plan, the agenda will come out before that meeting. There are a few other topics that we will be discussing as well. And then the next regular meeting of the Finney Town Board of Education will take place on Monday, August 15th, at 6:30 PM here in the media center. Open forum will begin at 6:00 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. Anything else?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.